This is I didn't answer.
I'm reading it now.
This person will have time to check my email. Oh, no. Yeah, I had to put it on my phone because it's just like going around so much. I had to. Can't I bet him?
Your name, you know.
And when working on my laptop, it kicks me off my remote access because it's interrupting the line. So then I've got to reboot the whole thing.
Oh, that's frustrating. That would be. You're right on a meeting or something.
And of course, it's actually happens. I was just writing that up like or playing this spreadsheet or something.
Oh, no. Same, 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 same.
Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM and I'm going to call this city council meeting to order. Today is January 25th. And will you please all stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, in thy name, the Lord, and thy children, and thy people.
Okay, we're going to begin with roll call and I'll just go down the line here. Councilman Owen.
Present.
Councilman McGoffin.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilman Allen.
Present.
Councilman Lavaca. All right, thank you, all good. Moving on to approval of the agenda, do I have a motion?
Make that motion, Madam Mayor.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Owen, seconded by Councilman McGoffin. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Consent agenda, items one through four, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by, or Diamond, excuse me, seconded by Councilwoman Kestie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right. Well, we are going to begin this meeting with an opportunity to learn more about the Senior Center. This is Renee Corcoran. Yes, and I had the opportunity to help serve dinner at the Senior Center with Renee and also with Ellen back at Christmas time. And we sat down and ate dinner together and I learned so much about the Senior Center and all the things that you're involved in. And because it's very much a part of our community, I thought the council members would also like to learn more about it and hear what you have to say. So, thank you so much for coming out this evening and sharing your PowerPoint with us and your information.
Can you hear me? Am I good? Okay. I am Renee Corcoran. I am the Senior Program Manager for Skagit County. I am housed in Skagit County Public Health as well as Ellen. We are a part of Public Health. I just wanted to say good evening and thank you, Mayor Johnson, and council members for the opportunity to share with you the information on Skagit County Senior Services in our apartment. I don't know how we're going to change slides here.
You can just say next slide.
Okay, perfect. And Senior Services is broken down into two main categories, the Senior Centers and then the Nutrition Program within the Senior Centers. That includes Meals on Wheels. Next slide. We have four Senior Centers in the county that are operated by county staff. We have two additional sites in La Conner and Concrete that we support with funding. Each center is unique, but they all have the same mission, caring for and serving the seniors in our community. Next slide. Senior Centers offer an opportunity for friendship, meaning, and purpose. Healthy relationships are necessary at all ages, but especially important in the senior population. Socialization can never be really overemphasized with that population. Next slide. From computer classes, strength and balance classes, line dancing, to bridge tournaments, the center has a wide selection of activities to choose from. Next slide. And I'm going to put my glasses on because it's getting smaller print, sorry, guys. Couple key factors about senior hunger. Nearly one in eight seniors in America faces the threat of hunger or malnourishment. Also, one-third of all seniors report trimming the size of their meals, skipping meals completely, or buying less nutritious food because they did not have enough money for a proper meal. Now, I'd like to transition into our Senior Nutrition Program. While hunger is in itself a danger to the health of many of our older Americans, it can also directly threaten various other aspects of their wellness, from physical health, safety, also mental health. Next slide, please. Skagit County Senior Services has three methods of supplying nutrition support to our community. Our programs help to elevate the difficult choices some seniors make. Our three programs are the Congregate Meals that we serve inside the Senior Centers, Meals on Wheels, which is our home-delivered meal program, and then Liquid Meal Replacement. And I'm going to talk about each of those three different methods. The first on the next slide is Congregate Meals. We serve Congregate Meals Monday through Friday at centers in Mount Vernon, Burlington, Anacortes, and Cedar Woolley. The meals provide nourishment in addition to the important benefit of socialization and feeling a part of a group or community. That's what we want the seniors to go in and do, is be, that is their community, that is their home. Oftentimes, these seniors stick around to listen to music or participate in bingo or card games. And one thing to note, that Cedar Woolley is the highest, has the highest partition, participation level in the county. On a typical month, 185 seniors eat at this location. So that's pretty substantial and it shows what a great job Ellen's doing in the meal program. The seniors are coming and they've come back stronger than the other centers after COVID, so we're encouraged by that. Next slide, please. I want to talk a little bit about Meals on Wheels. Meals on Wheels was established here in Skagit County in 1977. We currently serve meals to 420 clients. Most counties now have the service model where they deliver frozen meals one day a week or once every two weeks to the clients. Skagit County and the sport of the cities and the commissioners has not, we're one that has not had to do that yet. And that's really impactful because those clients are being seen daily. They're getting a hot meal daily and that's really unique in a state of, in the state of Washington right now and we're really proud of that. And I will talk that another important piece of that is not just funding, but is our volunteer base in our community. If we did not have the volunteer base to take on each route each day, this would not happen. So that's another testament to our community members and how they're stepping up each day to, to help us with these routes. It's, it's not staff that drives them, it's definitely volunteers. And we currently deliver Meals on Wheels to all areas of the county, from Conway to Bow, Marblemount to Deception Pass Bridge. Our meals, like the Congregate Meals, provide one-third of the recommended daily dietary allowance for those 60 and older. Our goal is to assist seniors in remaining in their homes, living independently for as long as they possibly can. That's our ultimate goal with our program. Next slide, please. Ensure Plus is another opportu, it's an opportunity that we have in the community to give our seniors some additional support. Many of our seniors have a difficult time chewing and/or swallowing due to mouth or dental problems, or they may be malnourished due to a chronic condition or illness. We are fortunate to be able to offer this alternative nutrition option to these clients. Some of them also combo it with, with the Meals on Wheels and then they insure it as well, double whammy trying to get their weight up or help them sustain the weight that they're at. Next slide, please. And I'm going to do a little shameless plug because as some of you may know, March for Meals is our big fundraising month for our program. The last couple of years, we have not been able to fundraise due to COVID. It's been a challenge to bring in the funds that we need to supplement what the government, what the cities, the, the county, the clients, our grant. Everything other than that, it's supplemented through our fundraising efforts and it's a big piece of making our budget happen every year. And we've been challenged in that area, so we're upping our game. We have a couple of events, one's in Anacortes, it's a bingo and spaghetti night. We're doing a little bowling bash with the Action Club Group, which is a group of young adults with special needs. And then we're also having a Rhythm of Giving Celebration at Bertelson Winery in Mount Vernon on March 23rd. It's a new event for us, so pretty excited. Chris Eager is coming to play and should be a really fun night, so Ellen's going to provide you all with that information. So if you had the interest, you could join us. Next slide, please. And then I just want to say thank you all for your support. Your support is what makes the Senior Center happen and our, it feeds our people, it brings them in to feel like they're a part of something. And we, we especially appreciate that. I just want to wrap it up by thanking you and just know that together we are, we are making that difference in our community for our senior population. So thank you very much. And then I'll answer questions, can I just let her? Go ahead.
Well, you can answer questions.
You want to answer questions first?
I will.
Do you have any questions?
Whatever you two would like to do, that's fine, we'll have the opportunity either way.
Well, thank you for having us here this evening, Mayor Julia and council members. I've met most of you, but I am your Senior Center Director here in Cedar Woolley and have been for 25 years now. So I finally got to be a senior in my own senior center. So now I've changed my story and I'm telling everybody I grew up in this place. We do thank you, we, we look forward to the support in the future, we're excited about the park remodel and what we can do to enhance that on our end and offer other outdoor opportunities for seniors. I'm thinking about a bocce court running down the side of the building, you know, just something to get us outside and get us moving. We enjoy serving the seniors here in the community. Phil comes to lunch almost every day. Almost every day. And so we have a lot of regulars and a lot of new faces. Every week, we have new people coming in, looking for opportunities to come and meet, and it's really important. And I want to again express my, my thanks for all of you. And I'm going to give Chuck some invites to the, I'm going to delegate this out to Chuck, Councilman Owen, to bring you some invites to have here and so you know about our fundraiser. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to say you ladies do a fantastic job and I'm a, I'm a staunch supporter of the Senior Center. And I had the pleasure, pleasure of delivering Meals on Wheels for two or three years and it'll just tear your heart out to see some of those people that are housebound and a lot of them are lonely by themselves and they want to, they want to talk, you know, and, but you can't visit very long because you've got hot meals you have to deliver. But it's a fantastic program and, and I'm kind of disappointed that the fundraisers have kind of died off because of the COVID. And I was, I always enjoyed getting out with, and, and begging some of these people here, you know, and, and raising funds for Meals on Wheels. I know it's a program that you guys probably fight all the time for funding and I just want to thank both of you. And Ellen's just like a sister to me, I've been around her for years, so you do a good job, Ellen, and I appreciate you. And I thank you ladies for coming and anyway I can help, don't, don't, feel free to call on me.
We need somebody for the city route tomorrow. I'm just kidding. I'm on them all the time. But just so you know that in Cedar Woolley, we have about 670 volunteer hours helping us out at the Senior Center every month. And we have some real fantastic volunteers that are new to us and we have longevity, but we always have room for new volunteers. So if you know anybody that would like to help us out, just send them my way.
All right, thank you. Are there questions? Yes, go ahead.
Well, I wanted to thank you both, Renee and Ellen. Ellen, I think we spoke earlier this summer about the youth center that was over there with the Y. And there was, when I met with the students down there, it was incredible that one of the biggest things they wanted to do is see tutoring. And I thought, well, have you guys reached out to the Senior Center? They might be willing to do something like that. And all the kids really were wanting that pretty bad up there. So I was just interested to hear if you guys would be up for a plan or something that's like community tutoring where people can have their kids maybe tutored by some of these people with that experience and knowledge.
I recently met with Serena Arima, so.
Oh, awesome.
We talked, so yeah, we're.
Awesome.
We're communicating.
That's great, that's too passionate. And then with the part going in, just having that extra set of eyes out there, looking around, checking if anything's happening or suspicious, but just having an eye out for our kids in that area, appreciate that. And you guys have access to a phone, so you can quickly call or get, get responders if needed in that area? You're awesome. Thank you. All right, well, appreciate everything you guys are doing.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you, I think it's a fantastic program that you're running, you're doing a wonderful job and I've been impressed with your wide base of support in the community, the amount of people who are able to go and help with Meals on Wheels. One of my neighbors volunteers for you all the time as well as a fellow Lion, so I really appreciate everything that you guys do for our community, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman McGoffin.
I just want to echo the thanks and appraise for that. One of the questions I had was, how many of the seniors in our community would benefit from like a transportation service to bring them to and from the Senior Center?
Which one am I talking, I can't remember, this one. I think it would be a huge benefit, there's a, there's a great need for it and there's not a lot of support right now. I know community action has something that they're trying to get started, but the need's always there and our volunteers always get hit up trying to get, you know, can you take me somewhere? Can you do that, which we can't do at the time, but I think absolutely, it would be huge.
Okay, I may be in touch later this year then.
Just a quick question here, do volunteers have to volunteer for five days a week or two days a week?
No, Glenn, we just ask people to commit to one, two hours for delivering Meals on Wheels. And then I have desk help that commits to one four-hour shift a week. We try not to use our volunteers multiple times per week because then if we do, then it opens up a hole if something happens to them. And we want our volunteers to take vacations, so when they take off and go for a month, we just fill them in, we don't give up their spot, we just fill in until they come back.
See, I'm not as old as Chuck, but I'm going to be 72 in a couple of weeks, so.
Well, you'd be welcome to come down and help us out, Glenn.
But not for 40 hours a week.
No, 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 no.
Did that, been there and done it.
Anything else? So Renee, did, did I understand correctly, when you and I were visiting, that you said the food is actually prepared in one place and then shipped out to the different centers?
Yes, so that process, it's kind of unique, it's, so we start in the kitchen at the Burlington's Community Center at 4:30 AM. We cook that meal for that day. Some of the components go to the centers the day before so that they can start packaging early in the morning. But it's sent in bulk in hotel pans out to each of the centers. It starts at 8:30 and it goes to Burlington and Anacortes first, delivers there. It's a hot, warm, it's a hot hold, cold hold, and frozen hold vehicle that we have. And so we deliver there and then we reload at the Burlington Center and then hit Cedar Woolley. On certain days of the week, we used to drive all the way up on Mondays up to Concrete. Right now, we have a volunteer doing it, so that's saving us a little on staffing time. But yeah, it's quite a well orchestrated process. And from that point, the volunteers in the kitchen at each of the sites get it into the containers that each of the clients will receive. They package them up, close them in hot hold in the Oliver, it's a shrink wrap type system that we do at the center. So a lot of the work is done getting the meals ready to go out the door for the drivers at each of the centers. But the, the main cooking is done at one location. We have a team that works really hard to make some tasty meals.
And, and they are very good, I've actually had lunch over there. They are very good, thank you, Ellen, for inviting me. I wanted to just say that it's really a beautiful relationship that the city and the county has. I don't know if you're aware, but Cedar Woolley owns the building, it's the county that runs the program. So it's a, it's a good program that we have going on, really thank you for that. And I hear great things about both of you, so you're both well-loved and respected and you do great things for the community. Ellen, you just, I know that, that when you're gone, you're really missed by the seniors, so, yeah.
We, you have a good one here. And when she retires, I'm going to cry, so. We appreciate you all having us and welcome to invite us anytime, I'd love to talk. So if you ever need more information or a different topic, let me know.
All right, thank you Renee, thank you for coming, thank you Ellen for coming. Yes, have a good evening.
Nice to meet you all.
Okay, moving on to staff reports and we will begin with you, Mark. Good evening.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Just a few things to pass on to you tonight. Charlie's asked me to prepare a legislative one-page to support the Public Works Vehicle Storage Building. As you know, we've been able to successfully build most of the project we anticipated down there, but we still have the need to get our solid waste vehicles in particular out of the weather. And so I'm going to be putting that together over the next week or so, I think the 15th is when you're going down?
Yeah, Councilmember Burns and I are going down to the Legislative Action Days put on by AWC and want to certainly advocate for that project. If the council is supportive of us pursuing funding for that project, Legislative ASKS will come out pretty soon, Capital Budget ASKS as well. And so we'd like to be authorized to fill out the paperwork to submit that, to see if we can get some state funding to complete the project.
The second thing I'd just like to let you know of, and you'll see it in the report this week, we did get the Community Projects Grant Award that Congressman Larson sponsored for us. Been a long process. I think, I don't know when they actually announced we'd got that, but it's been months and months ago and, and.
Oh, I think almost a year ago.
Yes, yes, then, then we finally got the, the preliminary version that we had to fill out to get the award coming. And I did that a couple of months ago and, and now the actual award is, is on my desk and, and I'll get that prepared for the mayor's signature to go forward on that. And that's the $500,000 that is a big chunk of the Phase One of Olmsted Park, so that's, that's wonderful news. The job posting for the senior engineer has been put on the, put on the website and the various organizations like AWC and stuff. And so we're really anxious to see how that comes in. Charlie's been burning up the phone lines with people he knows, I've called a couple of people, so we're hoping to get some good candidates for that and to fill that sometime in February. The Tuttle acquisition closed on the 24th and so we're the proud owners of that last piece of critical real estate we need to build the corridor project. And so thank you for your support for that, that's, that's been something that's been in the back of my mind for a couple of years that we really needed to get done. And so I appreciate your support and, and making that happen. SAP Road, we've been talking about the closure of that from Highway 20 to Jones Road. We published a public notice on that on the 24th as well. We have a comment period that closes on February the 8th. I have been personally in contact with the two affected property owners, the owner of Double Barrel Gem Lee and also Hadid, I'm not sure of his last name, that owns the former Remmer property up there. And Hadid is, is supportive of the, the closure. Mr. Lee is a little more reluctant, but he has adequate access off of Highway 20 and so. And I've stressed all along that that road was going to be closed anyway when we build the undercrossing, it would not be a safe intersection at that time due to its proximity. And so they, they understood that. So that will come back to you on the 22nd with a resolution for your approval or your action. And so that one, that one is in the works as well. And that's basically all I have to report tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. Charlie?
Nothing further unless any of the other directors have something. Don't believe they do.
All right, then we'll move on to council reports. Councilman Owen.
No, I have nothing, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman McGoffin.
Just one item this evening, we had a Public Works Committee Study Session. It was a really good overview by Mark of all the things we got planned for this year and there were no actions taken.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Diamond.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Burns.
Just happy to see some progress at Memorial Park. I was checking that out the other day when I was taking my son for a walk and I was really happy to see it's all been removed. So look forward to seeing the project go forward, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kestie.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Allen.
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Lavaca.
Madam Mayor, I was wondering about, it might be a Cali question, but the schedule for the committee meetings, I didn't see that on the calendar, so is, I believe that's online, but were we going to get invites for those?
You should, you receive invite, and I think it's Serena who's going to be sending out the invites. Each of the directors will be sending the materials to her and then she'll send the invite with the materials with at that point, so. And I thought that we had it listed in the last packet, but maybe we didn't, I'll go back and look just to be sure.
Yeah, usually you'll get an invite for your calendar and then you can just click that invite, but there was a lot that went in that got canceled, so I wasn't sure maybe they came in and so I was looking for those on the calendar.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So I don't get a reference to packet or, yeah, so that'd be awesome.
Should happen for you. Thank you, good question. Just a couple of things tonight, first off, I do want to really commend Mark for working on that community project. He did the application that we sent to Representative Rick Larson to his office and it was Representative Larson who submitted that for us. And we did receive the community grant, it is a half a million dollars. It did take a while to get it done, but it was the paperwork that came afterwards, once we had received it, that Mark had to do. It was a job, it was a job and a half and you did, you were very dedicated to it, thank you very much. I know it was more than we had truly anticipated as far as the work that goes with it. And also along those lines, I did send a thank you to Congressman Larson for the funding that he helped us obtain. And I have invited him, I'm working with his staff, but I have invited him to come in June for a ribbon cutting. Not a ribbon cutting, it'll be a groundbreaking ceremony that we're looking to do in June. So as we get closer to that and as I work with his staff, I'll give you the information regarding that. And then the other thing is, I don't know if you have received, I hope you have, from Helping Hands Food Bank, they are doing a Stuff the Bus. And Stuff the Bus is going to be on February 11th, it'll be from noon to 4:00. And I will send this information actually to Bill so that he can get it posted on our website so that you can see that. And also Director Larson sent us a thank you note that is in your packet, it's a very nice thank you letter and I thought, you know, you all ought to see that because you have been very supportive of that. Okay, other than that, we will move on to public comments. It is right now 6:27. If there is anybody who would like to pay, make public comment, please come forward, give your name and address and try to keep it to three minutes, thank you.
My name's Philip Murray, my mailing address is 101 West Woodworth, Cedar Woolley. I'm not sure if I can comment on new business, but I'm, I'm looking at number three on it. For change, to eliminate criminal liability for code violations and I'm wondering what that's about and who makes up the codes? Are they, they become local law and who makes those laws? Is it city planners, is it you people? Is it Mark Freiburger or John Coleman? Who make, who writes these laws up? And if it's, if it's city planners and Mark and John, then I believe that they should have taken oath of office of the Constitution. Because you could be violating people's rights and not being accountable for it. That's about it, thank you.
And so Mr. Murray, if you are interested, one of the staff can meet with you after the meeting and answer those questions for you, if you'd like.
I'll stick around.
Okay, is there somebody who would be willing to do that? Is there somebody who would be willing to do that? All right. Um, Mr. Bush will meet with you afterwards? Okay? All right. Thank you. Um, anybody online who might be interested in public comment? Okay. Seeing no one, we will move on. I will close public comment at 6:29. And we do not have any unfinished business. We're moving on to new business. Um, and we're gonna begin with the amending Title 8 to add a new chapter, um, 8.05 regarding compost procurement. And so, Mr., um, Freiburger, I believe you're doing this one? Or?
I think, uh, City Attorney was gonna address that tonight.
Mayor, I'm happy to handle that one this evening.
Fantastic. Thank you, Nikki.
Sure. So, um, this particular ordinance is amending Title 8 to add a chapter about using organic materials. And the goal here is to divert organic materials from the landfills. Um, the city is required to adopt this ordinance because it does collect yard waste more than 26 times per year. Um, and essentially, it, there's a couple of ways that, um, this policy will assist in diverting, uh, yard waste from the landfill. One of which is that the city is going to strive to utilize compost in its projects, say landscaping or other public works projects or, um, low-impact development projects. The city's also going to help to educate the public about the benefits or the uses of compost. And then in 2024, um, it'll report to ecology how much it has assisted in diverting from the landfill by, um, adopting this policy. Um, so this is on for a first read. It is a fairly straightforward ordinance that is essentially a policy. Um, and it is, again, required because we do collect yard waste 26 times per year.
All right. Are there any questions for Nikki?
No.
Go ahead, Mr. Lavaca.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I had some emails with Nikki and, and, uh, the Chair of the Public Works with Brendan and, um, Mark and Leo and that guy. So I, I think it was just my interpretation of what we wrote in the ordinance and then with the actual RCWs adjusted. And the way I interpreted it, the RCW said a city with 25,000 or more people and they already have an established waste collection plan. And the way it's written is they use the word "or" instead of the "and." And so I think that the way it was interpreted on that end was that it's 25,000 or they already have this, uh, plan in place of waste collection. So I think that, um, in the emails, we were talking about, the interpretation makes sense that it would be 25,000 and they have the procurement ability because otherwise it would be a huge financial strain on a community to go out and purchase new trucks and stuff and all that. So it only applies to people with 25,000 or more and they have the setup. The, the way that I read it. I didn't see it in the link that was sent either for the, um, the waste as well as the DOE kinda references it a bit, but they're not exact on their statements. So I was, um, I was inclined to think it wasn't really pertaining to us. But you, uh, the, Nikki mentioned that since we already do it anyways, it kinda folds in. But if we already do it, do we need an ordinance for it? I guess would be my question.
Yes, we do.
So, um, I, what this is doing is not, um, creating a program where we're going to collect yard waste. Um, it's just saying that when we have projects, we are going to look to our local compost facilities and we're gonna go ahead and try and utilize that in our projects. Um, it, it isn't creating a new program that we are going to have to purchase new trucks for or anything like that. We already have the yard waste collection. Now the question is, what do we do with that? Um, so this particular policy encourages us to utilize that finished product that is created from the yard waste in our projects to decrease what goes into the landfills.
That was also something we had talked about a little while ago with Leo is the collection of compost, um, and, and, uh, RCW that would state that we would need to collect, uh, compost from the residential neighborhoods into the, um, organic fills. And so I was wondering, does that go towards that direction? And if we're already doing it and it doesn't apply to us with the RCW in this ordinance, do we need it? Or if we do, should we change the verbiage from "and," from "or" to "and"? Back to "and."
So the interpretation of ecology and all of the cities is that it is not an "or" situation. I'm sorry, it's not an "and" situation. It's an "or" situation. DOE and the, the rest of the cities are interpreting this to mean if you collect yard waste more than 26 times per year, um, then, then you're supposed to enact this ordinance. And that is something that we already do.
But if the RCW, and I don't mean to go back for a little bit, but if the RCW specifically reads, "Each city and county with a population greater than 25 residents is measured by the Office of Financial Measurement, um, with the recent population data and each city or county which organic material collection services provided under 78 dot 207 RCW", which we went through, and it more specifies organic collection. So with the "and" they, which they're clear on, like Shell or those type of languages within codes, um, they're pretty specific of its seam, or at least the intent, they should have put "or." Is that correct? I mean, that's how we write our, in, uh, a later ordinance, we'll discuss. Um, and most of our ordinances, we are specific in our language, which is "and slash or" to make it clear what our intent is. And in this case, it's, it's not necessarily clear, but it seems like it would eventually lead into possibly, cause it, it also adds to educating the community. I would imagine that would be brochures, flyers, collection like that. Is that correct? And then is there any impact financially or, or anything on the community?
There is no financial impact at this time. It's, it's a policy. It's saying that we're going to try and do these things, um, unless it isn't feasible. Um, so, you know, we, we, if it's not feasible, it's not feasible. Um, and back to your point about the RCWs, those are two separate sentences. If they'd have been in one sentence where it said 25,000 and, um, a collector of yard waste, then, um, I, I can completely see your point, that they're two separate sections. Um, but I, I do, I do understand where you're coming from and I do understand why that would, um, be something you'd have questions about completely.
All right. Thank you, Nikki. Is there anyone else?
Uh, yeah. Madam Mayor, uh, I'll direct this to you. The yard wa- I use it all the time and I need to use it really bad now. Uh, would it help at all if the cost isn't that great? It's two days a week that somebody takes care of it. Uh, could Leo absorb and we can do that year-round?
So you're suggesting that twice a year, we have people bring their items in? Is that what you're asking?
No, no, no. I'm just saying, instead of operating nine months a year down there at the yard, let's just go to 12 months a year. The cost would not be that prohibitive. Two days a week. And they're not making union scale. So it's, uh, I don't know, something to look into. And maybe we can circumvent some of the DOE crud.
Yeah, absolutely. So, Mr. Freiburger, what do you, what are your thoughts regarding that? It sounds like something that could be discussed.
I can discuss it with Leo. Uh, of course, we didn't budget for that. I'd have to determine, you know, if we have capacity for that.
Yeah. You'd have to ask Leo, but it would be like Monday and Saturday, just like the rest of the year.
Yeah. Uh, I'll find that out for you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? So it is an ordinance that we are required to, uh, pass. So what would, um, the council like to do? Do you wanna make a motion on it now or have it come back on consent, um, on the 8th? I think it'd be February 8th. Okay. Here, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I, I don't know if it goes to consent. Um, I, I don't think I'd be voting for it cause the way I interpret it doesn't mean that we need to do it. So I would, uh, if it goes to consent, it'll kinda get pulled from that consent anyways cause it wouldn't, wouldn't have my necessary support. So it wouldn't make sense to waste the, the time to put in the consent. But that's, when we vote on it, that'll work.
So is there a motion at all or none? Okay. At this point, we will, um, table this until the 8th. We'll bring it back on the 8th. Moving on to item number two, which is the amending Title 9 to add new chapter 9.250 to include by reference certain weapon offenses contained in the revised code of the Washington, of Washington RCWs, Ordinance 2033-23. Okay. And, um, I don't know, Nikki, are you gonna take this or Chief McElroy?
I will, I will take this one as well.
Okay.
Um, so this particular code amendment is to, um, add some additional provisions to Title 9, which is our criminal code. Um, as you are aware, we did extensive, um, redo of our criminal code back in, I think, November of 2021. And, um, when we did that, we incorporated, um, the RCWs by reference in order to ensure that our codes were more up-to-date and consistent with state law. Um, one of the things we didn't incorporate at the time were offenses relating to firearms. Um, we have had some conversations with, um, the PD and there was interest in making some changes and bringing in those, uh, weapons offenses contained in the RCWs. And so that's what this particular, um, code amendment does. It, it brings in those weapon offenses and incorporates them by reference into the municipal code so that we, um, can enforce those. Um, it is on for a first read. Myself or the chief, I'm sure, would be happy to take any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you, Nikki. Are there questions for Nikki or the chief?
Just to verify, so we're not actually, uh, coming up with any new laws here. We're just mirroring the state's rules in our own.
Correct. Um, there is one provision in here that is discharge in the city limits, um, which is something typical, um, typically seen in municipalities, but everything else is just incorporation of the RCWs.
Okay. Thank you, Nikki.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I just had a question. So, um, up until this point, we haven't been able to effectively do anything? We have no laws against that? I'm just wondering why we, what's the, um, interest in updating all these ordinances when we already have something on the books? Or is there not something on the books currently?
There wasn't something on the books currently because we redid the municipal code a little over a year ago.
Okay. So right now, if there was firearms and dangerous weapons on somebody, they would just be able to walk? Do they have the right to have that on them? Or is there a federal or state standard that we?
No.
So state law, uh, all right. Go ahead. Steve, go ahead.
I'm just saying, uh, we could still enforce. We just have to go through a different, different court. We have to go to a different court. Um, but it's much better to have a lone court for these misdemeanor crimes.
Any other comments, Nikki? Did you wanna add to that or?
No, that works for me.
All right. All right. Are there any more questions or comments? Hearing none? Is, is anyone wanting to make a motion on this?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Oh, all right. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman McGoffin, seconded by Councilman Burns, and it's a motion to adopt Ordinance 2033-23. It's amending Title 9 to add a new chapter, uh, 9.250 to incorporate certain weapon offenses into the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign?
Nay.
Okay. So we have five in favor, two opposed, Councilman Owen and Councilman Lavaca. All right. Thank you. Moving on to item number three, amending Chapter 1.2 General Penalty to Eliminate Criminal Liability for Code Violations Without Identified Penalties and Add Civil Penalty Scheme, um, Scheme Consistent With RCW 7.80, Ordinance 2034-23. Okay. And Nikki?
It's me again. So this particular, um, change in the code, um, I'm proposing because the default at this point for any code violation, regardless of how minimal, is, um, a misdemeanor, which comes with a maximum of 90 days in jail and a thousand-dollar fine. Um, in my experience, cities are going away from that default, um, being a criminal charge and moving towards a penalty scheme that is more consistent with state law. Um, in state law, there are multiple classes of infractions. Uh, and that does give the council the flexibility to say, um, when you pass a new ordinance, I think this should be a criminal offense and put that in there if that's what you think, or, um, leave it as a default civil offense. This change would make the default a civil offense, a Class 1 infraction as opposed to a crime, um, which I think is more consistent with the direction that most cities are going at this point. And so we did have a little hiccup with Agendies where it ate my first, um, attachment. And so hopefully you've all seen the actual attachment in there. It was republished, I think, on Monday. Um, if you have any questions, I am happy to take them.
All right. Any questions for Nikki?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead. Councilwoman Kestie?
I'm just a little bit confused. Can you give me like a, an example of something so that I can under, better understand this?
Sure. So, um, so let's just say it's a, it's a requirement that you have a special event permit if you are going to host an event that has more than, um, that draws in more than 50 people. So let's also say that there isn't a specified penalty in that code. So if you violate that and had a special event without a permit, the default penalty for that under the current scheme is a misdemeanor crime. So this would make a change to say, okay, we're going to consider code violations that aren't otherwise specified as an infraction, as a civil, like a ticket, instead of a crime. And it creates a scheme where we have one, two, three, four classes of infractions so that we can, um, put in place penalties that we think are reflective of what's appropriate in the ordinances that we're passing and the laws that we're making.
So if this were more of like a severe, like if you could give an example of more of a severe case, they won't get a lesser punishment by passing this?
No, because typically when you have something that is a severe, um, offense, you've already identified that as a crime within your code. And so this is just saying those things that are unidentified, they're gonna default to an infraction now. As to a crime. Most of the time, if something is serious, then councils, they identify it as serious and they say, okay, we're gonna make this a misdemeanor or a gross misdemeanor. Um, it's usually when you're not thinking that it's serious that pieces of code get written that don't have a penalty, right? Does that help?
Councilman Lavaca?
Oh, Mike. Thank you very much. So, um, on the packet, when I downloaded it, it didn't have the attachment to it. So I would definitely need to read that in order to do that. If, I believe if we, um, revision any of our documents after they're released, uh, they should, we should be notified of that revision so that we're able to update ourselves on the, on the current revision, whatever that may be, language or added pages, added graphs, whatever. So that would be great. There was a situation, um, a little while ago where I got a couple of emails from gentlemen because of a story that got out there of a van that was in a parking lot. And regardless of what happened, the, the news report that, uh, reported on it said the council had approved this. And, and we've heard that before where the fingers are pointed at the council has approved this. And it, this doesn't go so much towards the executive branch or the attorney that kinda gets in the public eye on that, but the council. So on ordinances that deal with the codes or whatnot, I would definitely wanna keep a much more closer eye on. And I haven't read this one. But we're changing a lot to state standard. When I think, uh, last time Glenn, or Councilman Glenn, you pointed out that we were, Cedar Woolley were kind of our own little, own little thing. We had, we had things in motion. And now we're kind of moving to the state standard. So I just have to understand that a little bit more and that's my own comment. Thanks.
Councilman Allen?
Nikki, uh, this is Councilman Allen. Uh, in some ways, I, I'm not understanding where you're coming from, where you're coming from. This is almost getting back to dumbing down schools. We're taking all, everything and letting people just get a clean skate and not have to pay any penalties or face any, um, anything that could be against them. I don't know. I just find this is just being nice and destroying our legal system. That's my opinion.
So we still have a whole chapter of crimes that are identified in Title IX. We're certainly not intending to take away the teeth.
Councilman Owen, I see your light is on. Did you?
Pardon?
I see your light is on. Did you have something to say?
Do you have a comment? No. I'm with Glenn. I don't really understand the purpose of this, what's the benefit in amending this ordinance?
So, for example, recently, we passed a littering ordinance that has, that has different levels of penalties, right? And it says that littering below a certain amount is a Class 1 infraction. It says that littering over a certain amount is a criminal infraction. What we're trying to do here is put those levels of infraction in the code so that we can actually utilize them where they need to be utilized. And in doing so, also making the change to, change the default from a crime, right? Because there's so many things in the municipal code that you probably wouldn't sit there and go, goodness, that should be a crime if somebody violates it, right? Like the example I gave you, a failure to have a special event permit. Or, you know, say, you know, recently, we moved something out of code that said, you know, it talked about surveying certain departments. Or, hey, you have to have your numbers displayed on your house. Should that be a crime if you fail to do that? Or should the default be you get a warning or an infraction, right? So there's these little things that you wouldn't automatically say that should be a crime. You would probably say that should be an infraction.
May I ask?
I'm just, Councilman Burns had a question?
So it sounds like there's quite a few things in our code that didn't have a penalty specified. How challenging would it be for us to compile a reasonable list of what's there so that we have a pretty good idea of what we're actually changing the infraction for? Or I should say, the penalty for?
That would be very challenge. Very challenge. It would require complete code.
Nikki, you're breaking up. We're having trouble hearing everything, your sentences, completing your sentences. In fact, you just froze up on our screen.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now. Yes.
Okay. I said that would be very challenging. It would mean going through the entire code.
Okay. Yes, Councilman Lavaca?
Chief Dan, I was just wondering. How many people are you charging with Mr. Meaners on numbers on their houses or litter or these that are happening within our city limits? I mean, or a fall park for 2022, maybe? Thanks.
I don't have a number in front of me. I'd have to find that out.
You think it's substantial, 100 or 50 or 200? I mean, do you?
I don't believe so. That seems quite high.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
All right. So is the council interested in moving forward with this, or do you want to table this till the 8th?
Table.
Table? All right. So we will bring this back then on February 8th. I'm going to put this in.
Would you, Chief Dan, would you be able to get that info for us on the 8th? For 2022?
I can check, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to new business, item number four, it's a possible bid award, 2023 Public Works Operation Building Mechanical System Installation Project. Mr. Freiberger?
So I'll kind of lump together items four, five, and six. They're all basically the same project. This is the, the second floor of the Public Works Building that we've been talking about for some time. We had determined that we had sufficient local funding available to finish out the improvements to the second floor, and you authorized us to move forward with the ads. The bids have come in. All three of them are under the estimate that we had prepared, and we're recommending a ward of these. The first one is the 2023 Public Works Operations Building Mechanical System Installation Project. That's item number four. And so we're recommending that council move to award these projects as indicated in the memorandums. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to take those.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Freiberger? If not, I'm just going to kind of take you through if it's all right. Go ahead and move through.
Can we, Madam Mayor, can we make a motion on all three?
Absolutely, if that's what you want to do.
Okay. I just toured it about four or five days ago, and it looks really nice, but it needs drywall and wiring stuff. I will make a motion to accept the possible bid or the bid award for the building mechanical system installation. Furthermore, for the T-grid and drywall installation project and the electrical system installation project.
I'll second that motion, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Allen, seconded by Councilman Lavaca, to approve bids for 2023 Public Works Operation Building. One bid in the amount of $52,000 plus for the work on the mechanical system installation. The second for $29,000 plus for the work on the operation building for the T-grid and drywall. And the third bid for $68,000 plus for operation building electrical system installation. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. So on to the last item, which is the proposed regulations for the homeless encampments at religious organizations. This is a first read, so, and I believe, Mr. Coleman, that is you?
Correct. Thank you, Mayor. So, Council, you probably remember back in, I think it was a September work session, our city attorney's office had brought to you a proposal for regulations on religious, homeless encampments operated by religious organizations in the city. As, as you can see in the memo, it's in response to state laws that allow religious organizations to have, to host homeless encampments and safe parking. And we wanted to be able to make sure that the city had some regulations, putting some bounds on such uses. So our, our city attorney's office put together this draft ordinance to address the two issues, which is temporary homeless encampments and safe parking regulations. We discussed this at that September meeting, and then the Planning Commission held two public hearings on the proposed draft, and we made a couple little tweaks to it along the way. At the first public hearing, we had one comment, and then we held a second public hearing because we made some minor changes. And we also went through the effort of inviting Helping Hands, Family Promise, and all of the churches that have property in the city that might be able to do something like this to make sure that they were aware of it and we could get their feedback. I spoke in person with some people, and then when we had the second public hearing, unfortunately, none of the churches or Helping Hands or Family Promise did participate. However, we did have one other public comment from the same person that made comments at the first one. That's all reflected in the Planning Commission's findings of fact. This ordinance hasn't really substantively changed since you saw it back in September. It's just been tweaked to make sure that it's very Seadrillie-centric, which I know our Planning Commission and our city council feels pretty strongly about. I could talk, you know, the long and short of it is it creates an actual permit process for temporary homeless encampments, and the religious organization will have to show how they're going to operate that, including, you know, fencing and quiet hours and forcing who can and can't be there. And then the safe parking does not have a permit, per se. It's just they have to follow those regulations. With the, with the temporary homeless encampment, there's a public notification process and a public hearing. And then, then we can issue the, but Nikki, is there a public hearing? I can't remember off the top of my head. Now I'm panicking and can't remember if there's a public hearing or just, there's definitely a public notification process.
Yeah.
And then there is a public hearing, according to Nikki, which is the way I remembered it, just wanted to make sure I was telling the council the correct thing. As well as the homeless encampment, the prospective host has to have a meeting with all of the schools and childcare providers in the area to make sure that those, their concerns are adequately addressed and try to work it out together to make sure that everybody knows what's going on. The only thing I have left to say about this is the city attorney requested one minor wording change at 17.110020D, and it's actually silly, it's so minor, but because it actually would be a change, I want the council to be aware of it when we bring this back at the next council meeting. We're going to be changing that line to say, instead of saying the homeless encampment must be accompanied by an application fee as set for in the master fee schedule, it'll say must be accompanied by an application fee as listed in the master fee schedule adopted by resolution of the council. It's very minor, but I thought I'd point it out so you don't have to worry about it. That's all I have to present. If there's any questions or discussion, I'm happy to get that rolling now. Thank you.
Thank you, John, and thank you for the hard work that the Planning Commission, that they put into this. I did listen to some of that, and it was very good. Are there any questions for Mr. Coleman?
I have one from Mark. I don't know how you expect the council to get involved in something like this. We have no idea what, what the churches are doing or how they're running their programs. The only way we can, I guess, justify looking into that is if, if they come here and present their program and let us know how they're running their programs. I don't know. It's, it's a touchy subject you're getting into, you're getting into the churches. I know one church that they take in families. They don't take in individuals, they take in family that's homeless, and they have a person there that they're 24 hours a day to make sure everything is, you know, up and up. I don't know. It's, it's something, it's a, it's a subject that I don't want to really get too involved in because those people are doing a good service, and I think most of them are doing a good job. But, but like I say, I would like to see those people come forward and, and present their programs. That way you can kind of, kind of look at it.
Well, that, that's what this ordinance attempts to do. So what it says is if some, if a religious organization intends to have a homeless encampment, which as defined in here is a little bit bigger than what Family Promise does on a small scale, this would be, you know, outdoors, providing camping, providing the services for the people that'll be staying there. And so the permit would require that the organization come to the city with an application. It wouldn't go to the council. Council doesn't get involved in approving such things. What the council is being asked to do is to approve the review program that staff would then follow when somebody wanted to apply for this. So it's really no different than if somebody wanted to do a conditional use permit for something in the city. The council years ago enacted the regulations that set forth how a conditional use permit is processed. This would do the same thing. It would set forth the condition, the, the conditions under which homeless, a temporary homeless encampment permit may be reviewed and approved. So after the council approves this ordinance, presuming that you do, it would then become staff's responsibility to usher the, usher any applications through the process and, and go through the approval process outside of council. So you will no longer have to worry about meddling in churches' business. What I can say as far as the touchy subject of regulating what goes on at churches, which I agree is a very, is, we're very cautious when regulating anything, and, and that's no different than with churches. This, this, we are trusting that our city attorney has reviewed this carefully, and they reference the state laws that say that we can do these specific things, and planning staff has also gone through it. We're not attorneys, but we read it as administrators of the rules to make sure that it makes sense through our lens and also, you know, seems to, and it does appear to be in line with what the state regulations say we can and can't do. I don't know if Nikki wants to add anything to that.
No, I, I think that that's very accurate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, John, I wanted to personally thank you for reaching out to all those churches and leaders in our community on that end. I know your time is very valuable, and you are a very busy person, so to take those steps is pretty awesome, or your staff, and I know a little bit of that was you, or probably all of it. So that's really awesome. And it's unfortunate that people don't attend these public hearing meetings, but that's, that's their choice, it's on them. I really, I really enjoy how, or I really thank you for writing this up in the way that the tent is, because it's not so much regulating what churches do, it's more ensuring that we don't overburden the community resources, the governing resources, with too many programs going on at the same time that will utilize paramedics, officers, garbage, that stuff. So it's reasonable services, you know, what we can do. Not all churches pack out. Is there a clause in here for emergencies? I know that there's something that we could probably lean to for emergencies, but if there was an emergency where the churches decided with their hearts to open up for community members in the case of an emergency, that we can, we can support that activity?
So, yes, under 17110040, there's a hardship exemption, and it's one paragraph long. And the, the, the host may, a prospective host may petition the director for an exception from any specific use requirements of this chapter, section 030, or other condition imposed by the director on the grounds of hardship. And considering whether a hardship exemption should be granted, the director may consider whether the provision or the provisions at issue substantially burden the sitting or hosting of temporary homeless encampment at a particular location or by a particular encampment host. The effects on health and safety of residents and the community should, the exception be granted, and whether a less restrictive alternative means to achieve the health and safety objectives is proposed and/or reasonably available. So that's sort of an exemption from some of the rules. I did have a conversation with one church operator, pastor, I forget what, what title he held. He was concerned about, you know, say during a cold snap, and they wanted to house people in their church during that cold snap. I didn't take this ordinance to be something that would need to be done unless they were hosting it outside, which doesn't, kind of goes against the, the point of like a cold. So, you know, if they're like opening their gym to, to house people during a cold snap, I did not take this to require them to have to do, go through this process in order to open up their gym to host somebody for, host families for a few nights or a week. Host families for a few nights or a week.
I was thinking something a little bit more along the lines, because I did read that that was like specific for that church during that activity. But if there is a broad emergency that requires multiple churches to open up their hearts and their ability to let people stay there to help care for them and provide for them, that does take a resource, such as their parking lots and whatnot. If there is a clause, it'd probably be under the emergency order for the mayor to waive this, but that in there, in case there is like a severe forest fire, severe earthquake, flood, dam break, whatever the case is. And I know those are extremes, but that way we're not limiting it just to so many during a certain...
I can see what you're saying, like if there's a natural disaster or a significant fire in an apartment building or something, and there was a need for something that the Salvation Army might typically get involved in, we don't want to impede that type of emergency service. Nikki, would you... I mean, I wouldn't interpret this ordinance to say that they would... That any of those providers would need to go through this unless they intended to make it a longer than very brief period. We just try to be reasonable with those sorts of things. Am I outside of bounds there, Nikki?
No, I think that's completely accurate. I don't view this ordinance as applying in an emergency situation like that. Under that situation, the mayor's going to be invoking emergency powers, and frankly, this is not... This will be the last thing on anyone's mind. This is really something designed for individuals that are experiencing homelessness, where it is going to be a longer term camping situation as opposed to an emergency shelter situation.
Because as we do now within the cities and the county, when there is a need for warming centers, all cities, even those who have ordinances such as these for encampments, they open up warming centers. Certainly, we're not going to keep somebody out in the cold because of an ordinance.
John, just one quick thing. The planning commission wrote all the... Most of it out, right?
Well, our city attorney's office put together this ordinance for the most part. The planning commission reviewed it at one meeting and held two public hearings about it. You know, they suggested tweaks that we ran through our city attorney's office and put it in there.
I appreciate the work the planning commission did. Wasn't easy, you know? I mean, at first I was thinking, oh, God, what are we getting into? But it seems like it is fairly restrictive and yet benevolent, so, you know, they had amounts of people for acreage and all that, so I don't know. I think it was well-written. I don't think I'm ready to vote on it tonight. I'd like to see with the amendment, but whoever worked on it did a great job.
We actually brought this to you during the Cooperative Planning Commission's city council meeting that we had, and so all of that was laid out beforehand. And then when it went to the planning commission, they made some tweaks, but overall, they just really scrutinized what was in it and came up with some good minor changes. Because really, a lot of them, as I compared it, maybe I'm incorrect about this, John, but they're fairly minor changes.
Yeah, they didn't make any significant changes, largely because, you know, we're still kind of bound by what the state regulations say about what we can and can't do when regulating such uses. And we did not intend for the city council to pass and to vote on this tonight. They're still... There's under... The SEPA notification period is over, but there's an appeal process that is still... Goes until for another 13 days, so we're not anticipating the council taking action on this tonight.
So you said there would be a need for a public hearing. Is that going to be on the 8th, or will that be on the 23rd?
There shouldn't be a need for a public hearing. The planning commission held a public hearing on this, so unless the council changes it drastically, substantively, then there's no need for the council to have a public hearing. It will just be a continued... What do we call it? It will just be unfinished business on your agenda at the next full city council meeting.
On the 8th? All right?
Correct.
All right, thank you, John.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So at that kind of roundtable meeting we discussed, and maybe I'm incorrect, but I believe it was that this needed to be in place within a half a mile of transportation. Was that correct? A bus stop? The facility itself, by state regulation, needed to be within a half mile of a bus stop or a form of transportation for the people within the encampment? So they had opportunity to get around? And so that kind of went into discussion on mailed notice? And so my question then was, how did we come up with mailed notice for people within 100 or 1,000 feet of the encampment when we're within, you know, we're required to be within a half mile of public transportation, which would allow these people to be walking back and forth through the neighborhoods? Everybody has every right to walk back and forth through neighborhoods and those sorts of things, but you're... We're then just needing to notify or should be notifying the additional neighborhoods around the people within those neighborhoods, the owners and the schools?
So, well, I address the 1,000-foot thing. Nikki, I don't recall the requirement for it to be within half a mile.
Am I incorrect in that? That was my recollection.
Can you quickly look through? I don't have an electronic version to do a word search to see if there's something that says something to that effect. I don't recall that off the top of my head, but there's a lot here. The 1,000-foot notification that we put in here is the farthest that we do.
John, it's in 11A of...
There it is.
Sorry, 7110.0030.
So, yeah, 17.110.030A, is that A11? Temporary... Transportation plan must be submitted for providing access to transit. All temporary homeless encampments must be located within one-half mile of transit service. This measurement shall be taken in a straight line from the closest property line where the temporary homeless encampment is proposed to the existing transit service provided by Skagit Transit.
My concern becomes loitering and other things that can go on between point A and point B when we get there, whether it be public parks or that sorts of things, it's outside of that 1,000-foot limit, but would still affect the people within those... Within that range, and I just believe that the people deserve to be notified of what's going on around them.
How far is a mile? How long are you feet in a mile?
2640 is a half mile, so...
2640 is a half mile? Okay. So a half mile is 2,640 feet.
Correct.
So about 1,600 or so feet.
Additional. My concern...
I'm not familiar with any standards where there's notification for beyond 1,000 feet in any type of use. For practical purposes, it's very challenging to do something like that. The tools that you use to do that aren't as widely available, whereas you can do 1,000-foot buffer notification from... Just by using IMAP, which is the Skagit County Mapping Service. Nikki, is there anything that would... That addresses half-mile notification? I've never seen something like that.
I have not either. That'd be something that I'd need to look into and get back to you, and maybe form an opinion as to whether that would be viewed as overly burdensome to the church, because it's their obligation to send out these notices and jump through the hoops. So that's something I can look into and get back to you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor? Yes, go ahead.
I was just going to say, Sarah, that is an absolutely brilliant, wonderful idea, and I would 1,000% support that. And if the churches want to bring this in, I feel it's their responsibility to our community to do so.
So, you know, I want to back up on this in just a bit. I just want to make a comment. So the truth of the matter is that when people come into our city, they could camp... They can camp just about anywhere. They can park their vehicles and camp just about anywhere. And the reason that we put this together was that we were hoping that we could have an organized place where we could have the individuals come, be safe, and instead of them being all over the city or up and down our streets as they are in Anacortes right now, they have an issue right now, that we would have a place for them to go. And so we're trying not to make this too restrictive. We are trying to cooperate with those who really want to do a good thing for those people who are coming into our city. You know, it's... I know we keep calling them "those people." They're not really those people. They're going to be neighbors of ours for a temporary period of time. And so I guess I would ask the council to be a little gracious as you're looking at this and to see it as just kind of a general overall plan that we can use to attempt to keep not only those who come into our city safe, but also to keep them from spreading out across the city where it might cause distress for other people, where they don't want them parked in front of their home or whatever. Because they certainly can do that. They have the right to do that by state law. So this is just our attempt to do that. I don't know. That's just my two cents worth. I don't know if anybody else wants to add to that or not, but I certainly didn't intend for this to become so nitty-gritty. Councilman Burns?
I always hesitate if we're going to put restrictions on constitutional rights for people. I can see what the state was getting at. I want this to be done safely if it's done, so I appreciate all the work that you've put into this, everyone who's had a hand in this. I know that a half mile would be quite a burden for the churches to try to contact that many people, so I'm not sure that I would be able to support that portion of it. I like most of this as far as it being a well-organized way to make sure that all the sanitation needs are met and everything is planned for in advance, except for an exit strategy, it looks like. One thing that I had concern about was in 17.110.030, section 8, no children under the age of 18 shall be allowed in the temporary homeless encampment. Seems like we're providing a place, or, well, the churches would be providing a place where there's background checks, you're not allowing drugs, alcohol, you're kind of restricting illegal activities, you're keeping a closer eye on it, you're making sure that people are not queer criminals who are in here. And so restricting parents from having children in there with them seems overly burdensome, and it seems more like people would be safer in one of these encampments as opposed to being out in the street because they were restricted from going in since they had children. So that is something that concerns me.
All right. Councilman Allen?
Excuse me, Councilman Burns, sorry. We are not a sanctuary city, okay? You know, let's just get that straight. People are going to be driving for a half a mile. I don't see that big of an onus on the churches. If they want to enact this, and I don't know how many will, they'll find a way, so... Anyway, that's my opinion. We didn't... We're not asking or begging homeless to come in. We're offering an opportunity to have a safe haven, so that's my story, okay?
Well, I'm definitely not encouraging us to be a sanctuary city for people. I'm just saying that when it comes to restricting the churches' rights that have been established, we should be cautious as to how we do it, how burdensome we make it, making sure that we are being... We are ensuring safe environment for our community, for the people who live here permanently, while not restricting those churches' rights. That's my concern.
Yes, Councilman McLaughlin?
I just had a couple of questions on email. Did you want me to forward the responses to all council or bring them up tonight?
How would you like to handle it? Either way is fine.
Okay. Nikki made a good point on one of the questions to bring it up, so if you guys are okay, I'll forward... John had a good response to one of them, so I'll forward that to you guys. There was one that I thought we should bring up to just discuss as a council, and that had to do with, on page 61, it goes into the prohibition of the possession or use of illegal drugs or alcohol. My question was, I foresee a situation coming up where someone could have a medical authorization for cannabis and would want to use that inside of one of these areas, and I just wanted to bring it up so that we had a chance to talk about it, because it is illegal under federal law, but under state law, it is legal if it's a medically prescribed medicine. How does the council want to handle that? And Nikki, maybe you can chime in on this, too.
Brendan had some really good questions about that, and I agreed with him that we should probably add a clarifier there. If council wants to say all non-prescribed drugs, or non-prescribed or illegal drugs, alcohol and cannabis, or if they just want to leave it as illegal drugs and alcohol, that's something that we certainly would like to hear from council as to your preference on that.
Does council have a preference?
No, I don't think we're going to decide this thing tonight anyway. I mean, I know a few churches that are very strict with their requirements, and they police themselves, and they do a great job. They don't need the city or anybody else to interfere in their business, but you're talking about campground's out in parking lots, that's a different thing. Then there's going to have to be some restrictions and probably get the police department involved. But it's a touchy subject, and so far, thank God, that Cedar Willie doesn't have that problem, and hope we continue to be in that position. I feel sad for a lot of people out there that's really homeless, but there's people out there that love that kind of life, and I don't feel too sorry for them. But anyway, this is a subject that, you know, it's hard for me. It's hard for me to get involved in and tell the churches what to do and not to do, and I'm not going to do that. I think they do a great job, and I'd like to hear from them. In fact, I'm going to go talk to them, see what their program is. They all have... They're all pretty strict with policing their people, and they don't allow alcohol or drugs. I know that for a fact. But it's something that I don't like to get involved in too much.
So Councilman Kestie?
So, children aren't allowed to stay in these encampments. Is that correct?
The way this is written is, no children under the age of 18 shall be allowed in the temporary homeless encampment. So strictly speaking, that means no children, meaning not... If we wanted to change it, we would have to propose something to say, you know, only children accompanied by a parent or legal guardian.
It's such a mess, but if it's not for the mother who's in a certain situation needing a safe place to stay, what kind of people are they enticing to come stay in these encampments if it's not for a father and his child who had nowhere to go and needed a safe place to park? I just don't understand. It's going to be grown adults in this, just hanging out, camping out? I just... Who are we helping here? I guess if not for the children and a parent looking for a place to stay that's safe, I just... I think it's all ridiculous.
So it sounds like the council would like to make a couple of changes. Before I move away from what Councilman McLaughlin had to say, so, Councilman McLaughlin, do you have an opinion regarding the question that you brought up? And is there a change that you would like to see implemented into this ordinance?
Well, this is my opinion, and it's open for discussion. I think if somebody has a written authorization from a doctor to use a medicine, they should be allowed to use that. Otherwise, it should be not allowed.
So the wording, the verbiage that Nikki Thompson brought forward with, would you be okay with that wording?
Yes.
All right. So, and Nikki, I believe that you said if it's only if it's prescribed medication? um, prescribed medication? How, and would you like to repeat that so that Mr. McLaughlin?
So we'll just make some changes on the prohibition, um, the prohibition, it just says illegal drugs and alcohol, and we'll just make a, um, a caveat that with the exception of prescribed drugs.
Okay.
We'll tweak the word so that it, it clearly, um, excludes prescription medication. But beyond that, I'm hearing that you do want to include cannabis for recreational use in the prohibitions.
Is that correct?
Which I think is consistent with the intent.
That is correct. I think if we're going to
Okay.
we're going to have that policy with no alcohol, with no other drugs, we should stick to it unless they have a prescription from a doctor.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments regarding that? Mr. Lavaca?
I just have, uh, a comment on the entirety of it. I think the reason why we're doing this is to establish a precedence, because as of now, any, any, it, there's not limited to 35. It could be 200 in a single parking lot and it could be at every parking lot. The idea that we're creating, uh, uh, ordinance or, or this is, it, it makes it sound like it's an invitation, because obviously we don't have that challenge here. It's not, we, we don't, we can't fill up a parking lot with our homeless that we have here. So, but if, uh, if, if the church intended to do that without some sort of guidelines, which is all that's happening here, then it could get out of hand very quickly. And we do see that what's happening in, you know, we don't even need to use large cities like Seattle. Um, it's happening in very local communities, Anacortes. And the more help that the state brings in, as you see in all these states, the worse the problem gets. So we have to establish some guidelines. Otherwise, and then stay away from state help or suggestions as much as possible, because it doesn't work in Seattle or Portland or LA or Atlanta. It's only gotten worse. So whatever they're doing, we need to just go the opposite direction if we can.
Thank you for that. Um, and then for Councilwoman Kestie, so, um, I do believe, I can't remember who it was, if it was actually Mr. Coleman or Ms. Thompson who made the comment for children under 18, uh, that they need to be accompanied by an adult. Would that be acceptable for you and the other council members? Mr. Burns, for you?
My concern that that brings up then is then who's policing sex offenders that are coming into these things with the children that are there?
So
Does it become a?
So the way, the way I would propose writing it is no children unaccompanied by a parent or legal guardian, um, shall be allowed in the temporary homeless encampment. So, he, he, when it's a parent or legal guardian, there'll be documentation that they're, that they're associated in a, you know, a, in a family way and not, you know, the, you know, other ways.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay.
Can I ask one more question? We have on the, um, a lot of stuff happening, obviously, in the news in Texas and, and Arizona and whatnot, in communities kind of filling up with, with care. Is that something where in this situation, we, we see that sometimes people are, um, legal guardians, but they're not really relatives and there's trafficking going on? I was almost under the impression that the, in, that the family promise would be inside the church and that this, this ordinance isn't about what's happening inside the church, and that would be for the children and the parents, and outside would be for, for situations of hardship or whatnot, and then, then limiting that. So that's, that's why I was seeing that the no children within that zone. I don't know if you guys are familiar with Skid Row or other areas, um, it gets, it, without precedence, it does, it can get dangerous for, for children and adults. Do some research on, on what they look like. It doesn't, it's not, it can go south, so.
I'm sorry, so I'm just, so the, the children and the families, they get to be inside of the church? This is for something?
We're not making that call.
Right, right, yeah. Family promises, I believe Nick was using as an example of an organization that takes in families and, and children and, and those sorts of things vetted. Um, I personally would not support children under the age of 18, um, in an environment like this. I don't believe that, um, I, I personally don't believe that it is, um, a, a good, safe place and way to live. Um, I think ultimately, we're not going to solve the homeless problem with this sort of resource. Um, that's not the root, that's not what's causing homelessness. Um, all we're doing is, i- i- in some places is, is creating an, a Band-Aid on it and giving people a place to stay. When it comes down to some of it, I mean, I look at, um, the Burlington First Step Program. Um, I am near that facility three to four times a week and, and after dark. And there are many times where, um, my child is, um, partaking in athletic events and we've had to lock down because of, um, police chases and other things going on. It is not supposed to have drugs and alcohol inside the facility, but it doesn't stop people from doing it outside of it and then taking them right back in. Or people doing drugs right on the street corner and then going in, and my children witnessing it, um, needles on the ground, people throwing up feces on the gr- I mean, it's just, the list goes on and on and on. And so as we're creating this, it's not for lack of empathy for people in specific situations, in my opinion. This is creating and looking at worst-case scenarios and ensuring that Cedar Woolley doesn't become Seattle and that we don't put ourselves in situations and so that we have a place where our first responders in our, um, city can take hold of situations if it goes bad and we can correct those issues so that we don't create a long-term problem for our taxpayers to pay for, for our first responders to have to deal with and take our already stretched services and stretch them even further. And that's how I'm looking at this.
Any other comments? Okay, so, um, going back to the change up in the wording regarding the children, do you want to see the wording, um, children under 18 must be accompanied by an adult? Or are you wanting to leave it as is written?
I believe I would like to see that change, leave it to the parents to decide as opposed to restricting them from having that ability if they feel it's a safer place for them to be.
I would feel not having it, in my opinion, and so we could take a vote on that addition or amendment to this. But I, I would be opposed to, I would, I would, I'd see a church more taking a family in or other solutions for families.
Such as family promise?
Such as family promise.
Okay. Um, so, uh, did you want to make a motion regarding that?
Regarding that amendment, yes, I will make a motion for, uh, not allowing children within the facility.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Lavaca, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond to, um, can be consistent with what we already have within the ordinance, and that is that, um, children under 18 are not allowed. Any other discussion?
I have, just to add into that, so it would be clear to the churches that this is not for children, but there is an avenue that if you want to take care of families, do it outside of this approach. So we're not saying no to the minors and families. We're saying we want to separate the two groups.
There's another opportunity.
Okay.
I don't think this regulates anything that goes within their doors. So if they open up their doors and have extra rooms and stuff like that, that, that's within their
This is outside encampments.
This is just the encampment, yes.
Yep. Cool.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
All right. With those pieces stated, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Nay.
Uh, two oppositions, uh, Councilman, um, Burns and Councilman Allen, right? Correct? Okay. So, um, so we will keep it in as written? Do you, and with the stipulation that those who do have families could use family promise or other programs, would they do that? Okay. Take a minute. Okay, all right. So, um, that is all that we have on the agenda tonight. I'm going to go ahead and close this council meeting. Um, our next council meeting will actually be, um, it'll be a joint meeting. It's going to be on the first, uh, which is, I believe, actually next week. It is next week. It's going to be on the first, um, and it's going to be action-packed. I think we have a lot that's going to be on that agenda, and that will be with the planning commission as well. So, um, with that, we are adjourned, and council members, we do have a closed session to discuss collective bargaining.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I will be on Zoom next week. And so I'll be, I'll be out of state, so I'll be joining via Zoom next week.
All right, perfect, thank you.